Roll call please.
Trustee Crawl.
Here.
Trusty Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
Here. At this point in time of the agenda, is there anything that needs to be added, corrected, or changed? And were you able to?
And I don't have to do anything that I can start this process.
Uh, if not, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Some of them.
We have a motion on the table, support by trustee Reiner. Uh, further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. This is the first opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment in person or online, uh, please use the bottom task bar under the ellipsis of more to raise your hand or shoot, uh, a message so that we can identify you, uh, and your concern or public comment. Again, this is the first opportunity for public comment. If there's anybody online that has public comment, please, uh, send a message or raise your hand. Seeing no public comment, we'll move to the consent agenda. Is there anything that would like to be removed for further discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We don't have enough F and B person here. I had a question on your report.
Well, we do have an F and B person here.
Do we?
Yeah.
Would you like the, oh, water department?
Yeah.
Department report.
Can we?
So, uh, well, we can do it several different ways. So let's, uh, approve the consent agenda as is without the water department and then have the water department report. We have a motion on the table to move forward with the consent agenda minus the water department. Is there support?
I'll support it.
It's been moved and supported for the discussion. Seeing none, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That has nothing to do with the microphones being on. Okay, uh, oppose the same. Uh, Mr. Little, would you please take the podium to, uh, answer trustee Ryan Eric's questions?
Good evening, everyone.
I just.
Great, how are you today?
I, I saw just a couple of things. I had, uh, Lowell Road, there was a thing about some water leaking into, you know, the water shut off to the home. Oh, just was interested, did that get fixed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that wasn't here for the, right, and then, um, tell me why in, in Bear Point Trailer Park, we had, we worked together with, by the oldie, the oldie.
The oldie has a tractor truck that we did not have access to. So we found gravel in the sanitary sewer in that area. So we work with them because they have a camera equipment.
They have it and we don't.
Yes, sir. So we worked with them to televise the sewer in that area and also jet it out and factor it getting debris out of there.
So we had to pay for that.
Correct, sir.
That's reflected elsewhere.
Yes, sir.
Okay, cuz I didn't, I didn't follow that all the way through. All right, I think those are the only, yeah, that's the only things I have.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Mr. Little and F and B operations in regards to the water department report? If not, I'd make, uh, entertain a motion to move forward with the, uh, approving the water department report as presented.
Almost.
We have a motion on the table by trustee Reiner and support by trustee Polly. We move forward with, uh, the water department report for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Appreciate it.
I am, that's not, I don't want anybody to be ignominious about it, but eh, we can do it. Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Little. I think I'd still disagree with that. Um, moving forward into, uh, old business, uh, fire department EMS response for two, uh, skilled care facilities.
Good evening, everybody. Um, the last board meeting, I believe it was tabled, they wanted a little more history. So I've broken this down, uh, in response to medical care facilities. As a measure, you'll see, uh, supported by, uh, the current city fire chief, Rob Edmonds, and the medical control, director, if you will, coordinator, um. So we seem to be duplicating some services to these facilities since they're so close to the city, uh, and township line. Uh, and I was asked upon me by this board to come up with some different suggestions of, uh, things where we might be duplicating services and, and costing us a little bit more for expenses that might not be necessary. So I've formulated this, uh, uh, report to you, uh, based on some conversations I've had with supervisor Skibby and myself, trying to get the plan of, uh, what it actually, what the actual costs were for over three years. Um, and the overall cost for three years of operation, keeping in mind that the well-known urgent care has just been put into service in November, uh, we've already started around a few runs to that location, um. So that's just gonna be a, a thing that's gonna continue on, but we're looking at an overall cost in three years of operation roughly based on man-hours and mileage and different things like that, uh, around ten thousand eight fifty-three fifty-eight, uh, so, I just am presenting the facts to the board, uh, that I, that I know. Uh, certainly up to this floor to decide whether they wanna eliminate that service or not. I'm not recommending it, uh, but I'm gonna promote it as I was asked to do.
Yes.
Um, so it's from two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-two, correct?
Right.
So that's four years worth of data.
I'm sorry. Yep, so January first, yes, twenty nineteen till present is what I, why I, when I done that.
So it saves about twenty-five hundred dollars a year.
Roughly.
So I guess, how, my question is, where did we get the one and a half staff hours?
I got that number from you.
No, I'm, I mean, why did we choose one and a half hour?
Okay, I understand what you're saying now. Uh, so typically, we, we know we always have a full-time staff that's responding. We don't always know who else is coming to that location as far as paid-on call goes. And it doesn't happen all the time that we get paid on calls coming to the medical care facilities cuz they already know, uh, that facility is staffed with licensed, trained individuals, and they also know that the city ambulance is pretty close in circumference to our response. So oftentimes in those three facilities, we'll be pulling in the driveway roughly around the same time that the city ambulance would be. So we're kinda duplicating services. Uh, the previous chief from the city, and I talked about this at the beginning, uh, when I came in here, we looked at some things and I continued those talks with the now-present chief to see if this is something that would be feasible, that we would give up this opportunity to not respond to these type of calls, except if it was a cardiac arrest, then they need all hands on deck.
I guess that's not answering my question. Why do, why did we use one and a half hours?
Okay, so, we don't always know who's coming. So basically, uh, one out of three calls, you might get a paid-on call to come to that facility. So we base that.
But are we including our full-time person as part of the wages in your?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, but we're paying them anyways.
Absolutely.
So it's no additional cost to have them go. They're good, we're gonna pay them anyways.
Do not disagree with you.
So I honestly think the savings of ten thousand is high because we're already paying this person whether they go on this call or not. I, I'm just not for removing the service until we have accurate what it really costs, and it doesn't seem like it cost us that much for four years.
Yes, trustee Polly.
There's no depreciation figured in here. No. So you're, you're running the wheels off these machines and that costs money. You got insurance. Nothing said about that. So those are all issues that put, uh, an extra burden, not gonna, not saying something for the service, I can say that, same. So you gotta figure everything in.
But aren't we paying the insurance whether the car is sitting there or not?
I, I guess I could throw one point to you that, uh, obviously myself and chief Edmonds and our insurance risk manager had talked about. Anytime you pull that truck out of the garage, you're, the township's assuming a risk. Uh, just like the sheriff's department, anytime they respond to a call, they're assuming a risk. So basically, uh, over the course of three, three years or so,
It's four.
Yeah, four years.
Yeah.
You're, you're not, you're looking at, uh, what is it, three hundred sixty-six runs? I didn't total them off at the bottom, uh, but every time that you pull that truck out the garage, you know, anytime one of my paid-on calls gets a call and he steps up from where he's at, if he steps out the door and twists his ankle coming off the steps, that's a risk, right? So the only thing I can point to this board, this is not what I wanna do. This is what I was asked to come to the board with. Okay, so it's your decision at this point whether that's something you wanna undertake.
All right, I think with the board, yes, trustee Ryan.
Uh, two or three questions. Um, of those calls, would you be able to even estimate how many are, uh, cardiac arrest calls ninety-one, I guess they are on dispatch? How my, how, their dispatches, it's cardiac arrest, right?
I mean, I certainly could get that data from central dispatch to find out how many calls were, were actual cardiac arrests. But that would have involved very few, truthfully.
I would think.
Uh, the majority of the.
The age population you're dealing with, the nursing care facilities often, it's still, you know, probably very limited.
Right.
And some of those probably have a DNR code too.
Yeah, well, that we can't even talk about technically, so, uh.
We can't talk about its specifics.
Right, right. But you, you're absolutely correct, uh. This is just something I've been asked to do, so I brought it to the board. I mean, anytime you reduce your services on anything, obviously, it's gonna affect somebody right along the line.
Yeah. Two other, maybe two other questions.
Sure.
So each time you send out a truck, it's gonna be a fire unit, correct? Because you have to have that person available to that unit if they get a fire call.
No, not typically. If we have, if we have a call, let's, let me use Metal Lodge Greenview as an example. Let's say we get a call for there for a medical, could be prior to one, two, three, four, whatever. We'll respond to that. If it turns out that we're responding to that address as a cardiac arrest, then our engine from the south side station, because it's all hands on deck for cardiac arrest, will come to that location as well. So we have a rescue unit and an engine there. Now, if they called for a fire at that location, we definitely will have two fire trucks at that location. Okay, but we typically, if a rescue goes out, no matter what, if the south side station was to get a call while our staff is down at Metal Lodge Greenview, they automatically take an engine out to their call. So we always have an engine available if a fire breaks out and we have to respond to that.
Okay. And, and, and you would bring in the south side, say, Metal Lodge Greenview if it was a nine eleven, nine, ninety-one fall, right?
That's correct.
Both of your people.
Yep, and then, you know, our paid-on call staff also listens to that as well. They know that with a cardiac arrest situation, it's gonna be all hands on deck. So we will get more paid-on call responding to that. But if they know if we're just going to there for a, a simple lift assist or somebody's got a diabetic problem, that's something our full-time guy typically handles. The city ambulance comes with ALS. They package the patient up and they send it into the hospital.
Let's say, since I can see Metal Lodge Greenview, I kind of know that quite often those, those two rigs are almost simultaneous.
Almost. Yep, there's, there's days that they're not, but probably ninety-five percent of the time, we're pulling in pretty close.
Yeah. And, uh, uh, these nursing facilities too, on nine-one, nine, ninety-one calls, cardiac arrest calls. Uh, they have staff that are trained in cardiac response too. But they not, and they also have access to the patient's file as to whether or not they even initiate.
And, and AEDs and stuff like that. However, I know how that goes in a care facility. They have certain nurses assigned to certain patients, you know, they still have their patients to take care of, so that's why they call for help, especially on a cardiac arrest.
Well, sure, that's the person's gonna be transferred and don't matter what.
Right.
But we are doing the transport.
Right. Typically, the medical control policy for us is that if we can respond to a cardiac arrest with a patient's down, we have to work on that patient for thirty minutes. That is, before we transfer.
I really, I think that, uh, and, uh, the, um, and, and so your first response would be now, would you get these pickups with, with an F-150, not with an AM.
Right.
Right.
That's, uh, rea- really and truthfully, folks, from my standpoint, it's really the decision of the board at this point. I mean, I'm not sitting here advocating that I wanna take services away from my fire department or the township residents. I'm merely trying to suggest things back to the board that I was asked to do.
Well, and this gets back into the optics even more so than the economics behind it is, that's one thing that I think this board has heard through the past two-plus years is why are we in the Alpha Unit, Sarah? And so how do we, when we look at this from a, a higher elevation, um, the economics really aren't the lead cause. Um, but that being stated, um, it sounds like there's some, some additional information uh, that should be forecasted into making a sound decision, um. And so this is kind of getting into the, the realm of, how, how do we look at moving forward?
Well, are we gonna move this to new business so we can make a motion or are we just gonna take this under advisement?
We can make it, we can make motions under all of this.
Yeah, all right, whatever. It's a procedural issue, I don't give a rip, but, but, yeah.
Um.
Rules of, reference rules.
We always have done that.
Well, probably have, but I'm not sure.
We tabled to the subsequent meeting at the last meeting. Um, so henceforth, it's designation under old business. Um.
Well, I guess it is under old business.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was still in reports.
Oh, no.
Um, so I, I'd make the motion that we discontinue that service.
We have a motion on the table. Uh, is there support to the motion on the table? Or it's been moved and supported.
Supported by trustee Lappin.
Further discussion?
In reviewing Rob Edmonds', uh, just in support of my motion, in, in reviewing Rob Edmonds' letter to me, you know, it, it made sense, except they do want extra hands when they're doing long-term, half hours of long-term CPR. I mean, I've been there and.
Yeah, you need, you need to hit that six, six, six people.
Yeah, yeah, cuz.
And that's certainly something that Rob and I will set up a central dispatch if it gets to that point. Uh, they will know when to call us and it'll be set into the CAD system appropriately. Uh, and that doesn't exclude them from calling us for anything else that they might need help on. Because they can do that anytime.
They can do that anyway.
Anyway, yep.
Any further discussion?
Just, just to clarify, the motion is to discontinue the sort of redundancy of it. However, if there is a cardiac arrest or some other, uh, superseding event, then this motion would not apply.
That's right. That's, that's correct. And that was my intent. I don't, well stated.
I signed with the clarification.
I, I, I think we should, I think we should probably make that, uh, I mean, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with.
So would you be friendly, open to a friendly amendment to the motion?
Except for ninety-one.
Exception of, uh, priority one and any other instance where, uh, Alpha Unit requests whatever service.
Assistance to, to assistance to their unit, yes.
And I would support.
Would be, yes. Good with that friendly support. Further discussion?
Can I just get clarification on, uh, you did say priority one. So is that all priority ones or just the ninety-one priority one?
Explain what that would be if you would, for me, anyway.
So there's many different reasons, stroke, uh, so, seizure, that all fits the priority one category. So if we keep it as the priority one category, we'll still probably run a fair amount of runs. I don't have no problem with doing that, but just know that that's not, if you just, if you say priority one, that lumps everything in the priority one category.
I think we're beyond our license. It's a lot of things dealing with strokes and I don't know about seizures, but.
So I guess would it be, I'm, I'm going into, looking at this, I mean, because the letter of support from chief Edmonds, it said the only exception to this would be for a patient reported in cardiac arrest.
All right.
Which is a ninety-one.
Which is, would be my intent. I didn't know.
So the exception is for cardiac arrest only.
Yeah.
Otherwise, and, 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 and I think any, I hate to, I, I, for me, I hate to restrict it to just that because if there was an, an emergency need.
So it would be with the exception of a cardiac arrest and request of Alpha additional services.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, which, but the second part of it leaves it open if they need it. I mean, I.
I mean, they've got a severe bleed and multiple artery crease on someone, they may need some more answers.
Just anything that keeps us out of.
Just them requesting it. Yeah, request of Alpha One. Okay.
So just, could you just clarify the motion since we've had?
Discontinuing medical care facilities with the exception of cardiac arrest calls or a request from the Alpha One Unit.
From Alpha Unit.
From Alpha Unit.
Yeah, is everybody good with the motion on the table? Further discussion?
I'm still against it. I think I don't understand why we would cut a service. So that's just my thoughts.
Good. Have the opportunity here in a hot second.
I will.
Okay, roll, if there's no other discussion, roll call please.
Trustee Crawl.
No.
Trusty Reiner.
Yes.
Trusty Polly.
Yes.
Trusty Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palovich, no. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Okay, thank you, chief. I'll move into new business at this point. The agenda is the introduction of ordinance one fifty-two. Yep. Read the entire.
Sure. Well, I, I did the county, uh, planning commission last week.
I did get new glasses, so. Could it tire shit? Uh, anyone bottom lining it? Yeah, uh, Denise Klein from NEMCOG, the zoning planner, uh, extraordinary, who works with a lot of municipalities and works with this township real closely. And, uh, is really good, so it's the NEMCOG zoning ordinance that, uh, the board enacted a few years ago now.
Yeah, one forty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and so, uh, and I see this with every municipality, she's on top of it, and from time to time, she needs to update. And we do that through, uh, zoning ordinance amendments, and this one's comprehensive. It has a lot of subjects. Uh, the planning commission held a public hearing as they're required to do, get any input and discuss it, and then they make a recommendation to your board. Their motion was, uh, to recommend approval of the amendment to, but to remove the solar portions and address that in a separate ordinance if necessary. Uh, so it's this zoning ordinance amendment less all the solar provisions. You currently have solar energy provisions in your zoning ordinance. She was adding to that uh, thoroughly, and, uh, and I'm seeing that in other municipalities too. Nathan, uh, brought up a good point. The legislature is dealing with that subject right now and is probably gonna preempt the whole field. Um, but so, uh, Denise and this board, if necessary, can work through a solar ordinance or beefing up what we have.
That's where I spend my most time, darn it.
Uh, sorry, so you got a question too on it?
Clarified for them, it's like.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, that is the lengthiest part of the ordinance and, uh, and most comprehensive. But so they're recommending, uh, adopt it, but not with that. At this stage, we're just introducing it.
Yep.
So the real discussion from this board and the real decision will be at the next meeting where you'll be asked to, uh, consider adopting that. But so tonight, we just need a motion to introduce proposed ordinance number one fifty-two. And then I would take care of publishing a notice to that effect.
And so before we get to that motion, just a comprehensive, uh, quick synopsis of the amendments therein. Our state language mandates of definition of childcare home. Um, and so she's very on top of that. The, the bigger change, uh, that, uh, were recommendations through the building officials and my departments of zoning administration are, in the building department, is eliminating, uh, a static number to vertical elevation of stories of buildings. And so that's why that is in every article in terms of district regulations. Um, that was kinda snowballed, uh, several different ways of, and then the, the quandary then became of how do you measure overall vertical height? Is it to the eve? Is it to the peak? Is it to the overall top of, uh, a stack of chimney stack? Uh, Michigan Building Code has one set of parameters. Everybody has a little bit different. So the easiest way, and it was agreed upon even with Denise, was to, to simply alleviate the vertical height and to say if it's two stories, it's two stories with the exception that if there's, because what we found, we have some, some higher value homes that are, that are larger than just the, the single-family ranch style that has historically been built in our community. And just by their dimensions alone, um, they built a, a twelve-foot story first floor and the footprint was wide enough that when they put on the second story at an additional ten foot, uh, we basically hindered them to having anything but either a flat roof or, or maybe a two-twelve pitch. And so that's not really the intent of us to, is to hamper, uh, economic development in terms of residential capacity. So we, we eliminated the vertical, uh, requirement, just saying two stories is two stories. Uh, with the exception and the languages within that, um, that if it's a, a steep pitch roof or say, and it has storage capacity, that it is specified that, that is not for living. So you can't really, there's not a, a way to circumnavigate the overall vertical height. Um, the other big.
Yeah, question.
Oh, yes, by all means.
Um, my belief is, and I don't know that it has to be in a zoning ordinance for this to come into effect, but my belief is for firefighting purposes, there's some limitations in height because of the limitations of equipment available to fight a three-story or four-story.
Yeah, that's why, that's why in residential and commercial that we're already, um, limited at four stories or less, um, because, yeah, you are, you are right, um. And in only certain situations where we have infrastructure and known hardened surface, um, the aerial can only be used in very limited capacity. Can't be pulled into areas that don't have water infrastructure, um, because they need to know.
You mean sprinkler systems and so on.
Internal sprinkler systems. Yeah, hydrant, hydrants, but.
If you tell the aerial truck, go to the, go to the, uh, uh, new building on, on Bagley, for example, um, it would be fine.
Yeah, so commercial, commercial at least sets a precedent, and that was actually a discussion of how, how to fold in, especially at large-scale residential, is internal sprinkler systems. Um, it's one heck, if you have the economic ability, it's great as a homeowner to implement. Uh, but commercial, there's already those requirements. Uh, I think the aerial has a vertical capacity of a hundred feet. But therein, when I say infrastructure, it's water hydrant capacity. But then that's how, as a partnership with our, our neighboring community, how do we look at that as definition of mutual aid or an auto aid in certain scenarios? Can't really be auto aid because you never know. Um, but an aerial has to be one of the first resources on scene at the same time because once it's there, it can only be on hardened surface cuz it's sheer weight just allows it to be really utilized on gravel roads. Um, so it has its own caveats. Um, the other big thing was, um, an amendment, uh, from my twenty-seven roosters of this season, um, to clarify that and remove that, keeping all the language therein for waterfront residential in R-one with all the exact same standards as they should be in those zones. But we as a municipality have such a wide array going into R-two and R-three that we can have R-two and R-three surrounded by agricultural practice. And so affording them the ability in those zones to not have to go through special use, but still meet the standards for coops, et cetera, and not having free range, not ever allowing a rooster outside of a known commercially productive farm. Next, I, I would have had to put in beavers, but we also put, uh, in there fowl because we have guinea fowl. So we cleaned it, cleaned up some of the language. And so that's why it is fairly comprehensive because I don't like to move forward with singular amendments cuz time is money on every asset. Um, so it's very comprehensive. So it's, it's either a language change, uh, by state mandate, which you'll see in all the care facilities, or the fact that we have negated having a, a, a true distance associated with any of the building standards. It's a store, one story is a story, few stories is a story, and if it has a high enough pitch, it's denoted that it can't be used for living space. Otherwise, that's known as a story. So. With that being said, I'd entertain a motion to introduce uh ordinance one fifty two as presented.
I'll make a motion to proceed to the next step of uh ordinance number one fifty two.
We have a motion and support. Uh, further discussion? Roll call please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowell.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. I'm moving forward into the next item of new business, which is the Northern Michigan Materials Management Authority alternate appointment. Uh, at a previous meeting, uh, it was determined that. Uh, trustee Polley would be uh my uh alternate appointment uh to the recycling board. Um, trustee Polley has requested of the transference of that alternate position. Uh, to trustee Reinhardt, uh, so I'd like to show that in the minutes so that. Uh, Laura and I can take that to the board. Um, so I'd entertain a motion to uh make the change of alternate from trustee Polley to trustee Reinhardt in my uh absence.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table, do we have support?
Support.
Support by treasurer Ellery Summers.
You don't know what you're getting into.
Well, that's that's the question.
It's a lot of emails, I'll tell you that.
But but I wondered it. With no background in this, uh, we assume I should even as an alternate attend these meetings, so.
You know what? I encourage you to, maybe I'll miss a couple, bring you up to speed.
You won't get.
I know, I know why you said that, and I'm not gonna get in.
No, no, but I think honestly, i- if you want, I can, I can bring you up to speed.
Okay. I'll just go in.
Behind the scenes, um.
Just read through the minutes too.
Yeah.
I mean, the last.
You'll start getting.
Yeah, okay.
Copy that.
I think I already added you on the list.
I got something.
Okay, so we have motion, support, further discussion. Seeing none, uh, all those in favor of changing the appointment from trustee Polley to trustee Reinhardt uh for uh recycling alternate signified by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same.
Interesting.
Okay, moving forward into budget adjustments, um. What you had initially in your first pack.
Is then.
Was extremely comprehensive. And then, um, Michelle dug deeper into year end journal entries and I'll let her find out.
Yeah, I just dug into last year's year and. Journal entries, I'm trying to study them, learn them, so I know what. Is coming. Some did not need to be done, so I just kind of cleaned it up, so we didn't have an excess. So.
It looks like a lot of these, we can cover invoices we have. For a line item.
Yes, I have a question, what's, um, is five three seven a new?
Oh, it we looked, put it in there on.
Five nine two five three.
Aren't they zero zero zero?
Or, I guess which?
On the last page, five five nine two.
Isn't that?
Five three seven.
Five nine expenditure and water.
These are expenditures and water.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, no, those are correct.
No, that's right, five nine two five three seven, those are right.
Okay, it just doesn't sound familiar to me. Oh. That was all, thank you.
Nope.
Was that the new code?
No, no, that's still the the still the existing code, uh, that is, uh, five nine two is water department enterprise fund, five three seven expenditure side. Uh, otherwise would have been denoted as five nine two zero 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 as revenue side. Um, any other questions as to the uh updated budget assessments as presented, otherwise I'd entertain a motion to move forward?
So moved.
We have a motion on the table to move forward with the budget adjustments as presented. Uh, is there support? I'll support it. Um, further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowell.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward, uh, to new business item number four, uh, ten ten invoice for uh the battery. Backup server battery and microphones. Uh, you'll see that as a listed under. One oh one, one oh one, uh, seven two eight zero zero zero, um. And that is board of trustees, that is, uh, the unfortunate reality of uh our server battery and our principal server, um, is all comprehensive. Uh, to this board's function, and then the microphones, um, we were not able to. Get uh simply. Eight or two microphones, um, so we had to buy uh the entire set of microphones. Yeah, a- as you notice, uh, this does not have a name on it, mine failed, uh, and they would not warranty it without us sending everything in, and we did not have a timing mechanism. To where we had a dead spot in any meetings. To send all seven microphones back. Uh, without a return date or knowledge, this has been an ongoing, um. Conundrum, uh, through ten ten who fought diligently to. Get microphones replaced, um. The cleanest way out of it was to stay current with our microphone system, and now we have backups. Uh, because we only have, uh, in our server box, uh, behind you, uh, we only have, uh, I believe eight channels. So we can't use all. Of s- it's fourteen, um. I believe it was a set of seven, wasn't it?
Eight.
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 So, yeah, we can't use all eight. So Tim and I have been sharing up until this meeting, this is actually, I believe, our first full board meeting where I've actually had an independent microphone.
So how many do we have total then?
So we have total right now, we have fifteen, because we had one failure, correct? And I'm I I'm looking to Haley because she charges them most frequently.
Shut power of generator loose receiver. So. When they had ordered them a receiver, their new receiver came with a woman sent my. So there are eight, there are sevens.
Yeah.
And so these don't go back? These are, this isn't a warranty thing, this is just.
This is us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that one is hooked right in.
But the most.
It's hooked right into the speakers.
The most we can use at one time is eight.
Eight.
Boom, yeah.
Did somebody fail to unplug something before they? Shut the gen- turn the generator on?
Well, we could get into that discussion, that would be a point of clarification, uh, our generator after we as a board spent nearly sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, for an automatic power outage on this past Monday, um, resulted in an arc that shot, uh. Energy through our face covering panel. Uh, the generator turned on, uh, they're looking into uh what that cause was of failure of transfer switch. Um, so.
A new transfer switch.
It's gonna be something that makes it exactly how this board wanted to remove all human interference, uh, so that we were, um, with power moving forward. So to your point, uh, trustee Reinhardt, uh, was it a failure? We have power grids on everything, so how it actually affected just that?
So is this an insurance claim possibly then?
So it sounds like it could be.
Well, then we can maybe come back around to it.
Yeah, it sounds like it could be.
Um, so.
But I do have another question, sorry. So we have fifteen microphones, but of those we can only use.
Eight at a time, the receiver only has eight channels.
Okay, so I'm just saying, if nobody was here. And I was setting up for a meeting, and how do I know which eight, does it matter which eight I grab?
Well, because the other ones are locked in the server.
They know, yeah.
Oh, I didn't know they were all in there.
Nope.
No, they're all the ones that are.
Okay, no, I just didn't know if all fifteen of them were.
But it's a good question to follow up on, does that mean that if one of these goes bad? Then we can interchange them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, if you want to find the silver lining.
Okay.
Yeah, when.
So this is it, what we have, just because I know I mentioned it to Michelle at our recycling meetings. It is very, very hard to hear unless somebody is actually talking in the microphone, so I thought we need to get more, but we really can't.
No.
More than eight.
Yeah, to expand the capacity that.
No, the the capacity of the the conference system only allows for eight channels.
Thank you.
So I will make a motion. To. I guess we're, the motion would be to pay this bill, right? I I'd like to make a motion to pay this bill with the understanding that we. Review it and and. With this bill and any other, uh, costs associated with the failure to be submitted to, uh. The appropriate insurance carrier.
Well, we have a motion.
I'll support.
We have motion and support for their discussion.
Which might be ten ten's insurance carrier, is that what I'm understanding?
No, no, it'd be ours.
We could start with ours and then everyone a subrogate.
They would sub.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so we have a motion and support on the table, any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, roll call please.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowell.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. I'm moving forward to the next item, uh, is the statement and invoice from Frank's Key and Lock, um. This was, uh, principally, a lot of it was, uh, the majority of the cost was for one new code lock, uh, lever lock. Uh, for uh the door between, um. The old assessing office and the, um. Treasurer's office. Uh, that secured, uh, the back entry there and also made it, uh, more, um, timely if there was ever, uh, uh, an accelerated need to get access. Uh, and didn't have keys. Uh, to go that way, um, the remainder is, um, the install, um. And then the, we also, since we had it here, um, had them reprogram all of our code locks. Um, to keep that kind of moving in a good direction. So at this point in time, I'd entertain a motion to move forward with payment of this invoice at eight ninety four ninety five to come out of one oh one, two six five, nine three zero, zero one zero.
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the table and support for their discussion. Seeing none, roll call please.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowell.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yeah.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes.
Was the GL one oh one, two six five, nine three zero, zero one zero?
That is correct.
Okay.
Uh, moving forward, we have before us, oh, I know it's one of your favorite things to hear me talk, uh, a resolution. Uh, resolution, uh, moving forward, whereas, uh, Michigan compiled laws, section one four one point four two one provides that the. Michigan State Treasurer shall prescribe a uniform chart of accounts for all you local units of government in Michigan designed to fulfill the requirements of good accounting practices related to good government. And whereas a uniform chart of accounts provides a systematic arrangement and means for the uniform accumulation, recording and reporting of financial information and transactions for all local units of government in Michigan. And whereas this Michigan statute also provides that the official, who by law or charter is charged with the responsibility for the financial affairs of the local. Unit of government shall ensure that the accounts are maintained and kept in accordance with the chart of accounts, and whereas the Michigan Department of Treasury has during. Has during January twenty twenty three issued an updated version of the uniform chart of accounts and has encouraged all local units of government in Michigan to adopt and to use the updated version as soon as possible. Now therefore be it resolved that the Charter Township of Alpena pursuant to Michigan compiled laws, section four one four point four. Two one hereby adopts the Michigan Department of Treasury's updated version of the uniform chart of accounts and. Be it further resolved that the Charter Township of Alpena affirms its commitment to ensure that its accounts are maintained and kept in accordance with its updated version. Of the uniform chart out of accounts and all future versions prepared by the Michigan Department of Treasury. With that being stated, is there a motion to move forward with the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table and support by trustee Lappin, uh, to move forward with the resolution adopting the new uniform chart of accounts. Further discussion?
Why are we doing this so much later than our conversion? Is it?
Uh, this started with me, I just noticed MPA's. Emailed newsletter and they said. Let's get going, or they said you, uh, municipality should do this.
Okay.
And so you guys did it way back when your auditor recommended it. So I tried to preemptively make the auditor happy, you can say, yeah, we did it.
Thank you.
Sure.
End point and clarification, we've, we have already done it with the first round.
Mm-hmm.
Of the changes to the uniform chart of account, but this is an amendment to the uniform chart of accounts.
Yeah, this is a new chart council that. Yeah, and there.
So.
There'll be future ones down the road.
Hey, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, roll call please.
Trustee Crowell.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward, um, before you are, uh. Two comprehensive quotes, uh, from TRC roofing. Um. One is for. Uh, the Southside Fire Department. Um, and before you 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 see everything with an option, uh, to add our value with an additional cost of six thousand seven hundred and one dollars. Um, for a total load, uh, re-roofing Southside Fire Department at forty six thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars. On the second, um, proposal. There is, um. An original quote of one hundred and seven, five seventeen with an option there again to add an additional two inches of insulation. Uh, for an increase of our value of eleven point four, uh, for sixteen thousand fifty three dollars. Um, given the fact that, uh, especially our gas bill is not going down, um, we. Especially in. In my office and other offices, um, anytime that there's any. Decent, not even significant down for, um, I have a a rendition of a river runs through it. Um, we've also had issues, uh, in the DPW Bay of, uh. Failures of the roofing system that have thankfully only corrupted, uh, boxes of agenda. Packets from circa nineteen eighty four, um, so of which we can dispose of. That's a real, that's a secondary question there, Russ, um, but it would be my recommendation, uh, to move forward. With both of the roof systems, both with an increased R value.
There's, uh, there's area A and area.
So I had them, so. Area A, at least on the second quote that you see before you, area A. Is, if you look at the aerial.
Right.
Is everything principal that has issues. Um, area B is, a- as you had West on this roof Goldberg of the building. Um, you see add on, add on, add on, um, so area B currently still has a roof that's fine. Um, and it isn't causing any major leaks, and then if you look at the white roof, that is the newest part of the building. Uh, and also not showing any signs of failure. So area A is its principal, all the, uh, living quarters and the fire department, all the offices. Uh, moving back into the first initial bay. Um, so I had them segmented that way, um, so option B, as you did state, yes, it is an option, I although I think that it's an option at this point in time, not worth the additional expenditure. Um, and that's why my recommendation would be to move forward with both proposals at a grand total of. One hundred and sixty nine thousand six hundred and eighty eight dollars, uh, of which I I would say this is a perfect opportunity to use ARPO money. Of which, and I know you have the exact figures.
Of ARPO money?
Of ARPO available.
Um, with ARPO money, we have three hundred and sixty one thousand eight hundred and fifty five dollars and seventy five cents of it, seven, seven. Three hundred and sixty one thousand eight hundred and fifty five dollars and seventy seven cents.
This takes half.
It leaves us with the remainder roughly at two hundred thousand.
The the recommendation you're making is for the the additional R factor. Or.
Yes.
Um. How urgent is the south side?
It's. It's in bad shape, uh, it's also has, uh, for a flat roof, it has a a bad. Cascading effect. Um. And therein, the issue inherent. When you get into fire departments, uh, bay doors, depending on season, um. Sometimes bay doors are open, so where you can find efficiencies when doors are closed and encapsulate the heat within those cells. Um, it it's still a great cost savings. Um, and I would say it's as old as. Section A of of this principle. Um, we've done some patches and that's all we've done for decades is. Patch.
And and here's why I'm asking, and I've verbalized this here before, is that my my recommendation to the support has has been and still is. In fact, I I could. Maybe even authorize the. Supervisor just start looking or one of us to start looking. I've done a little bit of effort on that in that regard, but that come off dry so far. But I think we need to move that station. I think we, uh, have an asset there, there's probably the ground that's under the building, it's worth more than the building. The demolition cost would probably. Be, uh, for somebody be be the. You know, a big expense, but but that has commercial potential where that building is. Uh, and and the potential of having. Our staff at a more southerly location, I think, is is wisdom. So I hate to put even forty or fifty. So I hate to put even forty or fifty or sixty thousand, forty-six thousand in, in that building if we're soon gonna turn it over and it be demolished. Um, so that's why I asked that question.
I, I think, uh, a legitimate question, uh, to be asked, um, but even in, uh, in a fast rate, uh, our economics aren't in place to even have that consideration of basically designing and building a new station. So the likelihood of, although I do agree with everything that you stated, um, is that five or ten years downstream? Is it twenty years downstream?
Five or ten, even, it's too long.
So, and in the end, and in the interim, we have, uh,
You're putting a forty-year roof on the building though, that probably isn't gonna meet our needs.
For the last time that we would ever have to address it. So.
So I do, uh, uh, I know we haven't had a motion.
Yep.
But there's only one bid here. How do we know this is a good bid? I, I realize that the marketplace is thin, but there are roofing contractors out there.
Yeah, and I've been reaching out and reaching out and reaching out, and even with TRC, um.
I, I've heard Nathan practically begging people to look at our roof and give us a quote, and they're not coming.
Not many, other than TRC that I'm aware of, will do flat roof.
Yeah, there's a place in Saginaw I know that would, they wanna, uh, there's several, um.
I'm just talking about of whom I know locally.
Right, right, yeah. Locally, I don't know. I don't know if John's Roofing does that.
I don't think they put on a great roof.
So I, I, i- if I were able to get those three quotes, but then what, what's the threshold for our logistics, I guess?
Yeah, I just think, gosh, this is such a significant expense that it would be nice to know whether this is even a reasonable number.
Yes.
Did we run this by our building official to see if he thinks it's in line or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, it's like with, I mean, this is pretty sound.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know one way or the other. I mean, I know roser, I know it's not cheap to put a roof on a house.
So, so we did, I, the last I, and I'll get to your question here and up in the, Laura, um. I did see, uh, a quote from TRC for Southside, uh, less than a year ago. Well, roughly probably at this point in time, a year ago, uh, and I had him updated. Um, at that point in time, uh, costs have gone up just at the baseline, seven thousand dollars. And so uh, and I didn't see an option for an additional R value in that. Um.
Which is my next question. The, the, uh, R value. On the site. On the, on, on the, well, probably either one of them. It doesn't say what the R value of the, without the option, is this, this increases the R value by eleven point four. Does that mean the first one is eleven point four and it goes up to roughly twenty-two?
I see, I, 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 I guess I can't, I'm not a.
On an R value, but I'm not in R.
I mean, I'm a pirate guy, um, but, so, there's my joke for the night. Um, so I, I can't really explain that. Uh, Laura had her hand up first.
I just have, so just so I understand, south side would be a completely, complete roof on south side.
Correct.
Here.
It's a complete.
Is it A or B?
It's A. Everything to, ev- everything in the red.
Okay.
Which is principally where it's leaking are basically start at, I believe Michelle's office, my office.
It's leaking here.
It's leaking here, um, and then really bad, basically my office and, uh, the DPW offices.
And I know the fire department has some. So basically, there's not much that's not getting replaced. Or getting.
No, option, the, section B is, uh,
Just my office? No, you're out here.
Yeah. Your office is to the west, otherwise known as.
The weather we. No, I was just curious. So, okay.
I mean, if you want, we can, we can separate them out. I, I, they're both in, both in dire condition. I mean, we have an opportunity.
We've been talking about this for six years.
For six years. Um.
I mean.
That's.
This is the kind of things we gotta get solvent enough to do a CIP and then abide by it. We don't have.
Yeah, well, right now, even if the only mechanism that affords us this ability to entertain, uh, such a project are the ARPA monies. So. Table's open. If there's, it'd be my recommendation to, uh, move forward with both sites.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support? Support. It's been moved and supported. Further discussion?
Sure would like to have a second.
So any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Foley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Uh, no.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward, to the NEMCOG, the Northeastern Michigan Council of Governments, um, cost for service invoice of five thousand dollars. That is, um, uh, enough to encompass all on, we are moving forward with, uh, coming into this, uh, year, uh, our rec plan update, which has, uh, a cost of three thousand dollars, uh, being joint with Osneak, Wilson, and Green Township. I, I think that the county is potentially helping, which could potentially include a higher cost savings. Um, but that cost savings with all those municipalities is at three thousand. Uh, the remainder of this invoice is to put towards, uh, concurrent, uh, amendments to zoning ordinance one forty-two and our master plan. Um, I brought this forward because, uh, Denise's time is, i- is going like hotcakes and I wanted to lock her in, uh, for some March dates so that the planning commission can commence, uh, both of these principal documents, um, and bur- remove some of the burden going into next fiscal's expenditure and GL. Um, so it'd be, and I, I didn't write the, the GL on it, but we do have a GL within, uh, the planning commission for, um, directly for rec planning and consulting services, uh, which is funded currently at five thousand dollars. Um, so this would be, like I said, another good possible strike to move forward, uh, saving money going into next fiscal's budget.
Well, you, uh, I just wanna clarify, uh, the ordinance we talked about today was one fifty-two. Is that what you?
That's one fifty-two, which is an amendment to its principal parent document, one forty-two, our zoning.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So, yeah, great points of clarification. Uh, one forty-two is our zoning ordinance. Um, and so obviously anytime you're making any changes to your master, uh, your master, or your master plan is, is one of the holy bibles of this uh, municipality, uh, the rec plan therein, um, is, is as important. Uh, but it's, it's key importance is, uh, we have to have a, a valid rec plan inside of five years on file, uh, to be eligible for state and federal funding. So.
The only other question I have is, Chairman, is, uh, it's probably more a question for Shell or Laura, but, but, uh, for them to ask, I guess. If we're budgeting five thousand dollars, but we're really only spending three, should the other two thousand be attributed to the zoning, uh, line items instead of?
This is principally, so this is, they kinda go hand in hand. This is principally for rec. And then the remainder of that will be master. And then we'll know going in as they continue to work on the master and overlay with the rec, what zoning ordinance amendments will have to take place. So I misspoke earlier. So this is for rec plan and for the master plan services as stated. But changes naturally occur in the zoning ordinance that you have to be cognizant of.
So three thousand for sure for the rec plan, and that could possibly go.
On the master.
Less.
And if we can get some more municipalities, and I'm trying to get more townships involved, as we remember as a board, we actually took, and it took on a higher cost, um, three years ago, and jumped out a cycle to show basically the principles of intergovernmental council is many hands make light work. Um, so we hopped, broke our five-year cycle, uh, to become concurrent with Osneak, Wilson, and Green Township, uh, and Elpena County. Um, I did not stick around for the Elpena County Planning Commission meeting, uh, whereas I don't know if they were going for an RFP or how they're going to do, uh, moving forward with, uh, their consulting services. Um, but I know that the, the townships therein are, are definitely on board. Yes, Laura.
So will the remaining two thousand dollars cover the?
No.
Master plan?
No.
So it's like just a down payment on it, kind of?
And locking her time is, was, is crucial. So I, I guess I bring forward this recommendation of, uh, moving forward with the invoice to be coming out of one oh one, seven oh one, eight oh four, zero, zero, zero. At the cost of five thousand dollars for the update of the rec plan and partial update of the master plan.
Make the motion.
We have a motion on the table, support by trustee Foley. Further discussion?
The only, if I may.
Yes, sir.
The only other thing is we're paying an invoice for future services primarily.
Yeah, she's gonna be getting going here probably this, I mean, tomorrow, the next day is already March. Um, so we wouldn't have been able to secure any March dates for the planning commission if I didn't bring it to this board meeting tonight. Um, yeah, so first comes first is the rec plan. Right now, we have an anticipated cost of three thousand dollars for that service. Uh, the remainder will be going towards a master plan. If we can bring on more municipalities on the same timing mechanism, that three thousand dollars therein would be a remainder pushed towards the master plan. Um, at two thousand dollars, uh, that is a good chip at what the master plan's cost is. And she doesn't know what that total cost will be. Uh, the biggest thing was securing, moving forward so that we could lock up dates for the planning commission, Denise Klein. Any other discussion? Uh, roll call please.
Trustee Poe.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Okay, moving forward, I, uh, an invoice from Dixon Engineering, uh, this is, excuse me. Uh, this is, uh, an estimate for, uh, forty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars, and this goes hand in hand with the, uh, project administration. Uh, this was unfortunately a, an invoice, uh, that somehow fell between, between the cracks in regards to uh, our, our already committed, uh, program. Um, and so Kath brought it back, uh, somehow it didn't get to the board. Um, we've already moved forward with this entire project, uh, out on thirty-two, which will be commencing this spring. Um, but this was the, the last lingering thing. Uh, this is for oversight of our five hundred thousand gallon, uh, petosphere out on thirty-two, uh, for the cost of forty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. And it would be my recommendation to follow the, uh, same guys as expenditures of ARPA monies, uh, for this service.
So, so this is, uh, that answers my question as to whether or not this was a deja vu all over again. I, I thought I remembered this. I'm like.
We actually, if you have deja vu, Michelle and Haley rip through minutes.
Trying to find where we approved it and it's not in the minutes anywhere.
All right. Well, and that's why I remember seeing this, cause we spent a fair amount of time.
Yeah.
Looking at some of these things. Okay.
No, this one.
And we spent a fair amount of time going through the minutes.
Well, this is just, this is just cleaning up what we already did.
Yeah.
All right. So then a motion to, uh,
Forward with the, uh,
With the payment of professional services.
Yep.
I'll support that.
We have motion and support to move forward with the engine.
Uh, well, and that's the question then with the ARPA money. Th- this is over in a bubble. We've already approved for that tower, right?
Correct.
Yes.
And did that get reflected in the numbers you gave us a few minutes ago?
Never, because we have not approved it yet.
So, so that's another forty-five thousand.
Forty, so then with that expenditure would be left with a hundred and fifty plus thousand dollars, right around one fifty-two.
Because I know that we talked about using ARPA funds to do this.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And I'm not challenging that. I'm just saying, just to know where we're at with that fund. So we've spent seven hundred and fifty of nine hundred, but roughly.
At this point in time. But we've also done an amazing job of spreading it around.
No, I agree.
So it's not singular and it's.
So, has this project been done or part of it been done?
Nope. Uh, well, the pre, the pre-engineering, some of, some of the, the work to know what they have to do.
The phase one design.
Phase one design work has. We actually had, when we brought this to the board previous, we had two options. I've tried to push it, uh, for this past fall, which the window was an amazingly truncated timeline. Um, or lock in the price and move forward with the agreement, uh, for said services that are going to be commencing this spring. I don't know if we have an actual date, uh, just kind of a ballpark.
Um, but is this painting the tower?
It's painting.
This is.
This is, this is just the inspection. We've already approved the painting, the logo.
Okay.
All the comprehensive.
That was the two hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Yeah. And then Dixon does the oversight to make sure what we're paying for and meets all of our, the specifications, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
So they're acting as project and supervisor contractor.
Everything, yeah.
Um.
So any other questions?
I do wish, I wish we could modify the limitation of liability. It's just, it's so restrictive, but the answer is probably not good.
Yeah.
So, basically they're only responsible to the limit of their insurance.
Well. You vote against.
I guess it's just a comment. It's, I, I, I think we'll begin to see that a lot.
So any further discussion?
Well, that brings up a question, if, if I may, Steve, this is, are we covered under our own coverage for any additional liability?
Well, I guess you'd have to wonder what the circumstances behind it were. I mean, if it, uh, uh, if it was a collapse of the tower, it's no fault of our own, what would be the loss?
Uh, what would be the loss or what would be the?
What would be the liability?
Liability.
You know, so I know there'd be a loss, but what would be the liability? So, uh, that's why, that's why companies are starting to do this, uh, cause the remedy is basically not there. You know, the only thing you could do is say, uh, I, we agree with you, increase your, um, increase your umbrella policy to a maximum of ten million dollars. And then they'd say, fine, we have to adjust our bid. So somewhere along the line, we just pay for it.
Yeah, you always pay for it.
We're gonna pay for it.
Yeah.
But.
We just have to hope they're, uh, professional enough that that won't happen.
Yeah. Well, and actually that's why the vetting process through F and B narrowed it down.
Exactly.
So I mean, we, we lean on professionals to make professional decisions on our behalf. Um, and so we have a motion and support barring any further discussion, comment, uh, roll call please.
Trustee Lappin. Yes, um, trustee Lappin made the motion and I supported it.
Oh, sorry.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Foley.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. So moving past those twenty-two pages of pure excitement. Before us, we have, uh, uh, the Thunder Bay Apartment Water Meter Project, um. So this was, uh, as you'll see in, in your packet, um, the recommendation, um, to move forward with, uh, Ferguson, uh, for these three meters, uh, the total cost of eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. Um, and correct me if I'm wrong, that is, that is the principal direction that are nine meter. Okay, copy that. Yep, I should probably look at each and then do some quick man.
That last paragraph, yeah.
Yep. So there are nine meters. Um, and then it's a recommendation, recommendation. Uh, to move forward with the quote from Ferguson Water Works for nine ultrasonic meters, uh, to the total cost of eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. Um, and I would look to a motion, uh,
I'll make a motion to
purchase nine ultrasonic water meters for eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-one, sixteen. Purchase nine ultrasonic water meters for eight thousand four hundred and fifty one sixty. Okay. Uh, there's a motion on the table, is there support?
Support.
Moved and supported, further discussion.
What's the other poll for?
We're a high flow and I don't know.
Yeah.
When that's necessary, because we're not getting that, are we? I just said that was a question.
Yeah, there are points of clarification for site specific questions.
Sir, so the higher uh bid in there is for a compound meter, which is a high flow and low flow meter. Uh, you're gonna see that on cases that we use a lot more water, whether it be like a hotel or or even Starbucks has one.
For CRTC.
Certainly, exactly, um, but these just being normal apartment buildings are gonna have normal residential services. We don't see it necessary to have that, and plus you're low flow part of that high meter, it has to be replaced within ten years anyway. And you can get two of the same ultrasonic meters that need to be replaced in ten years for the same price as one compound meter.
Now, uh, if if a home has a grassy. Leaks such as freeze up in the winter and in the spring, it starts flowing all sorts of water through that meter, will it tell you that?
It will still record them, it will still record it, that we don't, we won't get a notification that, hey, you're using a lot of water here. But these nine meters are all for apartment buildings.
Oh.
So I hope somebody would notice inside the apartment.
Their head wet.
You would think so. Grayer stuff has happened.
So another bonus to moving forward with this uh meter from Ferguson, these are compatible with what will probably be coming down the pipe. As a USB RD uh request to do meter replacement a- as the like. These are the meters that we're currently using in the rest of our uh residential services.
Yes.
Um, and uh available for, um. Attachment to RDF technology using radio frequencies uh for weeks. Uh, mitigating a tremendous amount of labor expense and time.
Are these equipped with said uh radio frequency?
They will be compatible with the system when we get that in place.
All right, well, because one of my questions is going to be, and I, and I, Nathan may have. Helped me along a little bit, I just wondered if there were other quotes that we received, and so.
Uh, we haven't, we have not received other quotes from other companies at this point, just because we've been using Neptune meters as our rep for our meters for our general homes. And so we were kind of looking at a thing where we, every single meter is compatible with each other. If we start going to different vendors, then we're looking at different lead times for your first difference first, that for different meters. Different readers, different components to read said meters.
And Ferguson is the principal distributor of the Ferguson.
The of Neptune meters, yes, sir.
So it's a single source.
So they're a wholesaler.
Yes.
So they would, they would have multiple uh uh options even within their own facility.
They should, I believe they also have iPearl, which is a census meters that the city uses. And those lead times are very still astronomical.
I guess I'm just looking at the idea of trying to make sure that we're doing our most fiduciary uh responsibilities.
Yeah, and the other issue we're dealing with.
Sound structure, but you know what I mean.
And the the other issue we're dealing with, everybody's dealing with is lead time and stuff. This is the shortest lead time compared to any of the other census meters that we were looking at by quite a bit. I mean, our lead time for these meters, we order them soon as each July, and looking at another price increase in May, I believe, it said on the paperwork.
All right, thank you.
Any other water sewer fund budget?
Yes, yep, this is within the scope of uh operations and man or maintenance, uh, there's, we've been. I don't want to go too far down that, but we have enough uh available funds, uh, which we've been paying the O and M out of. Um, this would actually be maintenance on system, but it would be a general, so maintenance on system, I believe, is uh. Five nine two, technically, we're paying through five nine two, five three seven, eight oh one. Zero zero zero, which is a professional and contractual, which is part of that is a payment towards. Well, it's per the O and M derivative of that fifty two thousand.
So who's going to pay this bill when it comes?
F and B, okay.
And then they'll tack it on to our stuff.
They'll take it out.
It's already in there, that's part of, part of that O and M that we're already paying within the the monthly cost.
So we pay, then we pay a uh sort of a processing fee.
Yeah, like an admin fee, correct.
Is that included in this?
Uh, no, this is just a quote right from the vendor itself.
So then that's a.
I believe it's five percent or.
So add five percent, why can't we buy that direct?
The board can, I I thought.
We could.
We're trying to go through and use a maintenance allowance, but if the board wants to buy in direct, that's the board's choice by only.
I'm just thinking out loud.
Certainly.
Gonna go to the same place, right?
How much are they gonna save if they?
About four hundred and some bucks.
Four hundred and twenty two fifty eight, which, just for a point of reference, uh, encoding a a sequence of bills. Through, um, Bedrock and MacArthur, uh. The township saved thirty three hundred dollars.
And you know, just penny here, penny there. So, it's gonna do the same net result.
Well, but does it have to go through the general fund and then?
No, no, this is an enterprise expense, so it'd be maintenance on system if we were to pay it.
I know.
Yeah, fifty one thousand, two hundred and sixty four dollars. Yeah, probably won't be.
Why not sign a main professional? It would be nice to save four hundred dollars. We have eighty seven thousand in there.
If you'd like to.
See their.
Beside specific to that.
So.
I think.
We'll pay it.
Administrative function.
Out of. Maintenance on system, which is.
By getting the bids.
Five nine two.
Five three seven nine three one zero zero zero, maintenance on system. Uh, for eight thousand four hundred and fifty one dollars and sixty nine cents. Is that, uh, to the. Uh, clerk Flavich, are you friendly to that amendment of your original motion? Then to the supporter, trustee Croll, are you? Here, are you?
I'm not listening.
Nine three one, zero zero zero, yeah.
Maintenance on system.
Maintenance on system.
And we save four hundred bucks.
Save four hundred.
And that's not included in the eighty four fifty one, right?
No, no, that would be.
In addition.
In addition, yeah. So we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Pauling.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lidle.
I just have a question on that.
Yes.
Um, so. The next time this comes up, who does all the homework to find out where you're gonna buy it from? Exactly. Yeah, that's my hesitation.
Right now, it's a presentation, that's why uh come to conversation with Ms. Wynn, it's kind of that ebb and flow. Um, we've kind of, uh, we have to define that, uh, as we move forward with uh uh an amended contract coming into this year. Of what is that economic threshold of us then having to put RFPs or secure quotes is? What's the cusp?
We, we talked about that and and the conversation was that if if uh we have an opportunity. They would essentially know what they need, uh, they would, as I recall, uh, prepare to. Find out what those costs were, and then that option was presented to us, and if we, if we wanted to buy it or have them do it. I remember there was sort of a dollar threshold.
Yeah.
But, uh.
Which I believe was looking at ten K, something like that, and so therein, uh, to, I mean, so we have to be cognizant. I mean, because they're providing a a tremendous amount of services, streamlines our ability to operate in an efficient manner, so.
Good question, but I thought we.
So, okay. Any other uh discussion on that, moving forward, uh, chief, you have new item eleven?
Uh, I wanted to do one point of clarification on the response to emergency medical facilities, if you wouldn't mind. That process could take up to a couple of months to be approved through the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, so.
You already had a letter on that or nick somebody?
I do, but it's still, that's our local protocols, it still has to be approved by the state. Anything you do has to be approved by the state, and it'll have to be entered into that uh nine one one system down in the CAD, and that's how that happens. Just, I just, I missed that in clarification.
That's a good point of clarification, I sat in a meeting with uh Kim Elke, uh, Chief Edmonds, Chief Hanson, uh, Rory.
Yeah, Ryan Sherman, yeah.
Uh, from nine one one, I I I learned a lot, um, and even though we're the administrator of. This board and all departments, uh, there's a lot of other fingers in that cookie jar. So it's a unique process, I never would have thought that it was this complex, but.
There was something that totally slipped my mind proposing it back, so I want to make sure that y'all knew. Uh, anyhow, um. I'm, would like to propose, we've had an opportunity, several opportunities to try. Uh, some different jaws of life units out, in fact, we've operated four different manufacturers type of jaws. Um, supervisor Skibby and myself had been talking about this, I've talked with the, um. With the fire committee, we've reviewed all the purchasing or the quotes. Um, we have four quotes from different jaws units and, uh. Working with all of our staff, we found this Helmatro unit to be. Uh, basically the best unit as far as we could find with performance, uh, weight. All different kinds of factors, uh, to help us with our auto extrication. And be more versatile, uh, compared to what we are now, this would be another tool in the toolbox for sure. Uh, we're currently limited to a power unit that has to be lifted by two personnel, uh, we have to hook up hoses. You're looking at ten minutes to basically get this thing operational. These, you grab them, you slap the batter on, you walk out and you can start uh extricating out of the vehicle, uh, so. This is something that I had put in a budgetary uh thing for, for the year, out of the of the fun. Been holding off on buying anything major like this towards until the end of the year, so we knew we would have enough funds to uh make it through the end of the fiscal year. We know everything's tight, uh, we do, you know, supervisor Skibby and I talked about this, uh, you know, having one at each end of the township. I've provided a list uh to the fire committee, we've reviewed different projects that we have in a priority list. Uh, as far as equipment goes, and, uh, you know, based on, uh, our discussions with the fire committee. That's my recommendation, I'd like to uh propose that we purchase two combination units. I do have one on display, it's a brand new unit, this is a little bit larger unit than what we would be getting. Uh, but they didn't have that, the the delivery would be probably towards the end of April before we would be able to take delivery. On the two new units, if we were to go ahead with that purchase, but it's it's my recommendation, uh. To have better service on our uh emergency runs where we do need the jaws. Uh, that we, uh, you know, look at this as an option. I'm also looking at proposing uh to this board, probably at the next meeting, that uh Tim and I have worked on a little bit. Um, language to try and recoup some of our money, uh, when we respond to uh auto accidents that we where we use the jaws. We can establish an ordinance, uh, to build such insurance companies that are involved with said vehicles. And, uh, hopefully, over time, we would recoup a little bit of that money, of course, not a lot, but at least some is better than none. And what this does with with limited staff and manpower, uh, it takes two people to take a jaws unit out of the back of the truck right now. If the jaws, if the jaws are needed more than fifty some feet away, like the vehicle's over in the trees. We gotta carry the entire unit there, which is taking resources and time, and this is something they can grab, even if it's the main. Pay or for full time guy that's on, he can start extricating before we even get anybody else on scene.
Uh, this is electric power.
This, yeah.
Battery electric.
I'll do a quick demonstration for you.
Is it got cutting function too, or did?
Yes, so. Most particular unit to put the lights around the handle, so here on the backside of our lighting, in the ditch, in the water. You have lights, well, being act up, it's like a good speed gear, you go for it. Feed it up, this will cut, this will spread, uh, these tips remove, I'll show you real quick.
Well, I'll think you're word for it.
Yeah.
Um, the, the other question is, I I assume this is fairly new technology, the battery power.
Uh, the ion uh charger has been out for probably five, six years now, correct?
Yeah, so you have an experience factor, if somebody does, what's the, what's the? What do they call that when they put it on the website? You know, the the ratings, what are the ratings from people that have been using it? In terms of longevity, the battery and power.
Yes, well, this particular unit, where they need to be, with shut, it's a nice. It's terrible that they come back, um, this particular unit, both units, we would be requesting a spare battery. And that'll run you for basically a couple of hours of cutting, uh, with two batteries. And sometimes you just never know how long it's gonna take you to, uh, you know, get get into your vehicle, um. The technology's been around a while, to get back to your question with the the ion battery, I guess they call it. Uh, so that's pretty solid, this company manufactures their own battery as well. So their uh jaws units rely on independent battery companies, which some of them run on a Milwaukee battery. Or a D-Walt battery, Milwaukee can decide to, eh, we're not gonna make that battery anymore, then you have. You know, two units that are no longer any good because you can't get the batteries for them. This, this company's uh forte is that we will always have a battery for a tool that we sell you. So, because they manufacture.
That's a bad thing too, because they could charge us whatever they want for a spare battery, because we have to get it from them.
Well.
It's a double edged sword.
Well, absolutely, uh, now, I can tell you, for example, we've, we've tried, uh, all these units out. And had the opportunity to cut, and I will tell you, the lowest price unit on the. Uh, quote that I have here, and I'm not gonna mention the company, this, I just don't want to do that, you folks have that information, uh. We had a brand new tool that was pulled out of the truck.
And one of our guys took that tool to the door, started operating it, the door went banging, the tool quit, and it was done. So we eliminated that out of the process, uh, we don't wanna have that type of piece of equipment. So, but the other ones we've, we've talked to, we've, I've talked to a lot of people, a lot of departments that have this, they love this uh tool. It's well, uh, it's kinda, it's kinda neat, they can troubleshoot this tool from wherever.
The ones you have now are gas powered, right?
Yes, that's correct, grass, gas with the hy- hydraulic hose that goes through it, so you also run that risk of. Uh, rupturing a three thousand PSI hose and having, uh. Right, so.
So, yes, trustee Polly.
Does the city have these?
They have. A similar version, I think they have Genesis is a different tool they have, they're all roughly right in the same ballpark, uh, uh. They, I've talked to different guys at the city that have been on different departments or had the opportunity to run these, like them. Uh, different departments that we've thought, everybody likes the Helmatro and its versatility.
One of the things that a lot of the other jobs here don't have, is they don't have the paperwork on the handle, so you gotta, you gotta try and hold it or get somebody else hold, and they're not lucky. But they do what you need to do, uh, so. Basically, that's my recommendation that we move forward with that, uh.
Where's the battery unit, is it that wraparound?
I've been curious too with the battery.
That's it, that's. Do you think they'll last an hour, studying?
Yeah, we've been a couple of guards out here with this particular unit, so.
I'm not.
Yeah, if you want, let's just, A or B calls for pretty good.
Yes, Lord.
Um, so. If we bought two.
Mm-hmm.
Nor-nor side and south side, would this be like stored or kept in the, in the fire engine?
It would be in the engine.
With the battery.
Or chargers, that's correct.
Would be in the engine or one of the pickup?
Well, ideally, I'd love to have it in both, but our main priority when we go to a scene. We have to, by NFPA standard, have a charged hose line if you're using a jaws. So if you spark something or start something on fire, when you're cutting, you gotta have the ability to put it out.
Got you.
How, how long do these last, like, do they last five years, ten years?
Batteries or?
The whole unit.
So.
Like, how often will we have to replace them?
They don't have the ten year shelf life like everything else does in the fire service, okay? Currently, uh, one, I think the unit on our truck here is a nineteen eighty nine vintage. Uh, and the one at the south station, I think, is a tad bit newer, maybe I have that backwards. Uh, but ones like the ninety, early nineties and ones in eighty nine, the power unit.
Well, this could last us twenty years.
Could, yes, I would hope so.
With battery replacements.
But I'm sure.
Five.
Possibly. Yeah.
Which is the small cost of the bill problem.
Right.
So that was, you answered one of my, oh, sorry, cash.
So this is gonna come out of this year's, but.
That's correct.
So I was just, I know I have a radio issue too, and tell me if that's, uh, I'm out of my mind here, but will we be worth, or would it be worth?
Will we be worth, or would it be worth buying? One and those battery packs and that stuff out of this budget. And maybe use the rest of the money to buy radios. And then when we roll into our new budget, do the same thing.
See, you kind of missed that portion of a lot of our discussion after you left the committee meeting this morning. But that was certainly something that to consider. And right now, we're working, currently working on. The spreadsheet like we did for all the gear. We're working on the spreadsheet for the radios. We're not in imminent danger at this moment for radios. But we've had one fail that was given to us by the county of Genesee. Genesee County. So we suspect. That if one's starting to fail, there's going to be more, but we're going to look at a rotational. Process of the radios as well. And. I think we've got that.
Yes, Laura.
Could we sell the ones we have right now and get a little bit of money out of them?
Not recommended because we still, they still have abilities for other things to use them for. But this is a quick response thing.
Oh, so we would still use the other ones maybe too?
Yeah, sometimes you'll use three, four jaws on an accident. Depends how bad it is. You have teams and you're set up on each side and you're. Cutting the roofs apart and you're tipping them back and trying to get people out.
So. At this point, Tom, yes, Michelle.
I'm just curious, how many times a year do you think we use the jaws?
So.
That was my last question.
So we. I I will tell you this much. If you run the jaws one time. You are saving somebody's life.
I understand that.
To answer that question in last year's response, we had seven uses of the, of the seven usages of the jaws.
You had one, you know.
We had a double. Well, it was a single fatal at that point, but.
Yeah.
Succumb later to the injuries.
Yeah, but it was important to try to get them out.
Right. And I will tell you, I will tell you, Jim Stackowitz was the full time person, well trained. He had difficulties getting the jaws units out of the back because he was the first one there. By the time you string up the hoses, start the engine, you're, you're looking at a lot of time.
So with that being said, I, I, I didn't catch the first part of the joke to my left.
There really is. No, she just thinking.
So we have. My questions have all been answered. How many PIA's? How many extrications? Do we currently have jaws at both stations? And then also the radios. You and I had spoke because. You know, we, you have a remainder, but that gets back into that, that list of that prioritization. So. We have a recommendation of chief to move forward with the expenditure of twenty eight thousand nine hundred ninety two dollars and twenty nine cents. To come out of GL two oh five, three, three, six, seven, four. Or, yeah, nine, seven, four, I apologize, point zero, zero, zero as straight equipment. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
I'll support it.
Motion and support on the table. Is there further discussion?
The only other question I have is a great big bold letters that says freight not included, but next to it, it says a hundred and fifty.
That's exactly the question I said to my sister. Well, it says you're charging a hundred and fifty. He goes, no. I don't know why the the computer generates that. Because a lot of times they don't include that price.
But that's included.
But it is included. And this will come with training from the company. They will come up and actually train our staff on the tool. And make sure that they all have the proper training for the operation of that tool.
Why don't they just bring it with them?
So.
I hope so. I'm going to try that.
Yeah. Um, so I did actually think of one that I forgot to ask. What is the? Warranty.
Okay, so. I believe they said, I had that in the full, I think it's a three year warranty, but.
Is it in this packet?
No. Doesn't say on this.
So I guess just. It's not in the packet, so this. My questions have been answered and I asked one random one. That's a win in my book.
And maybe he'll answer me right away, but I just texted the salesman to see if I can get an answer real quick.
Nope, we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
First, we're Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trusty Crawl.
Yes.
Trusty Reiner.
Yes.
Trusty Polly.
Yes.
Trusty Laffin.
Yes.
Third, Flava Cheff, Supervisor, Skibby.
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, this is the second opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment online, please use the bottom task bar to message us or send us. Raise your hand so that we can identify you and hear your public comment. Again, this is the last opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment online, please use the bottom task bar under the ellipses to either raise your hand or send a message so that we can identify. The ellipsis is a dot, dot, dot.
For lifetime of the tool, two years on batteries.
It's better.
Let's get three. What is the lifetime? What's the lifetime? It's a weird thing to live lifetime.
Yeah, probably don't want to use norm or me.
Lifetime. And what'd you say?
So, uh, thank you for the clarification to that salesman. Again, this is the last opportunity, not seeing any comment online. We'll move forward to discussion. Yes, Michelle.
Are we going to set our next budget meeting?
I have, that would be a good thing. That was one of my comments is. Uh, what does everybody's schedule look like for? Let me get out of this.
I'm pretty much available, but Fridays are not good. And Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Yeah, so pretty much Thursdays between two and three of available.
Are we talking this week?
So we are at.
Should do it this.
Um, well, I would remind everybody that we will have it done by the twentieth.
The only reason why I say is we have a, we have a fire committee meeting Monday at. At every particular this hour of the morning.
I know.
Which we're going to make, we're going to discuss specifically budgetary stuff. So.
Yeah.
So it'd be.
So you want it sometime after next Monday?
I would, yeah, at, at, at least after nine o'clock AM.
That'd be nice.
Because we're not going any longer than that.
And I think at that point, I may give a topic for discussion to the fire committee.
Okay.
As you and I have previously spoke about. So I don't disagree to have that conversation on the sixth. My recommendation was going to be the second. Um, but now with that being brought forward. I would say, and one. What is, let me get to the right one. Tuesday, the seventh. I know that Cash, you're kind of either early in the morning or late in the afternoon, correct? Well, I'm trying to be considerate.
So.
To be ignominious.
Does that give us enough time?
Ignominious?
Give us enough time?
Okay.
I, I want to be anonymous myself.
Um, so thank you for giving it to me. I deserved it both times. So we have the seventh, the ninth, which is a Tuesday or a Thursday of that same week.
I really. I have a three o'clock on the ninth and a morning, morning is taken.
Are we good on the seventh?
I can do the seventh.
Ash can do the seven.
I can do the seventh after two thirty, three o'clock.
No.
After three?
Yeah, what's yours?
Three o'clock or after.
Yeah, let's do that.
So we're doing budget meeting.
Well, let's do the four PM. Would that be on the seventh? Tuesday, the seventh at four PM.
At four?
Four. Yeah, because I'll be bringing, coming back with the utmost pace from the county road commission meeting. At three that I've asked to be on their agenda.
Oh, I have a nail appointment.
Yeah. So with that being said. Are there anything, any other discussions for the good of the order?
I, I had an inquiry.
Yes, I'll answer.
And I also maybe a little comment. Are we still doing, working on the brownfield for the bus garage or is that off the table?
That is off the table. We've already sent back the one million dollar grant. Unfortunately. Now, the brownfield, the brownfield is not dead. Um, there are a couple smaller projects that are. I'm probably going to be calling, have the brownfield call a meeting to order to address two smaller commercial sites. That would entertain some of those brownfield. Aspects.
Isn't the, isn't the. For lack of a better phrase, the groundwork for a brownfield authority in place?
It's, yeah, that's not being dissolved.
Yeah, okay.
It wasn't a one, it wasn't a one hit wonder.
Yeah, because it seems like, you know, it's still a problem that we need to have.
It's a separate but independent board that will remain consistent as through the eons, probably for the lifetime of a jaws unit. Maybe, and definitely longer than a battery. So that was project specific.
Right.
Purchasers. So. So to that, yes, the brownfield does exist. We'll probably actually be calling a meeting. In the fairly near future, we have one site going through their phase one and phase two baseline environmental assessment. A second site going through their phase one baseline environmental assessments, which are prerequisites. To get their feet in the door to have the discussion so brownfield. One has the opportunity to be an extremely unique, fun project that would be a wonderful addition to our community. Can't really talk about economic development. That's like talking about structures of how we're going to have union conversations. You just don't do it. So with that being said, I guess, Russ.
The only, the only other comment I had is. You know, as we face or realize that we've spent like nine hundred thousand dollar. Thing that normally doesn't occur. We've spent seven hundred fifty thousand that those are rough. We, we need to have. A methodology either to increase our income or to reduce our expenses from our funds. And not all of that's general fund, but a lot of it, some of it is. To, I mean, where would that money have come from but for that nine hundred thousand?
Well, one thing will happen. With our hitting our assessing, getting that up to.
Well, we don't even know where that's going to.
Help. A little bit.
It'll be the first time probably in the history of the townships. That hopefully an additional five years from now, we will actually have a complete tax rule. And updated. We also have, and that's what thing that we discuss in budget sessions is. We have in the next year or two, we know that we're going to have above and beyond. The anticipated contract costs because of current findings. I have not. Talked with Alan in a few weeks outside of one tribunal attempt. That I think we were successful in mitigating. That. But we know that we have. Some costs coming up.
But back to my point is, is we need to figure out how we're going to handle. For future needs. Without anticipating something like a nine hundred thousand dollar involvement of that. Outside of the budget planning. Oh, and, and we need, and I don't feel we're being responsible in planning for those things like gross. And, and so on. And those kinds of costs. Uh, within our budget. I mean, that's why we talked about a year ago a CIP and I thought that was going over to the planning commission. But. Doing the planning doesn't help if you don't have. The funding source. And so we need to reduce our expenses or. Seek and, and, you know, you folks, when you went to the charter township, you committed that. You wouldn't raise taxes even though you can, in my opinion, based on some more recent stuff and actually even. What I was reading at the time. Without a vote of the people. And I think that commitment needs to be kept. But. We've already seen an effort to go to the people for funding for the fire department, which would have relieved our general fund. But now we're looking at spending. An awful lot of money out of our general fund just for that one department. And, you know, we don't have that much income for our general fund. So I think we need to start thinking. Future and forward, and I feel like we're not doing it. And I feel it's irresponsible of us not to.
Well, wasn't that part of what the CIP committee was supposed to do?
That's what the planning commission I learned is supposed to do, actually.
Right.
But you understand. You can plan for CIP, but if you don't have money coming into.
Oh, I understand that.
It's, it's a twofold. You have a roadmap of forecasting expenditures and that's the principal use of a CIP. Um, but I think where you're getting at is maybe something that would be best served as. A, a milledge committee. Of, because it isn't. I mean, we've, we've had discussions. Some more favorable than other. We know that we have limitations in terms of our economics. Um, and it's not site specific to a singular department.
No, because unless we can get a grant to fix these feeder lines or whatever you call those lines that are going bad in our.
Service lines.
Service lines. We're going to continue to have that draw and that's been, you know, right now, it's pretty good.
But at least with, in that regard, at least within the enterprise fund. That has. Avenues for funding mechanisms. Um, it's not a guarantee to get a grant. And those thresholds are changing on by language from, I think the new term is overburdened. Um, or significantly overburdened, as to the drinking water state revolving fund, which last year, everybody is cognizant of that process. So we're pushing that same IT, ITA, the intent to apply. With a forecasted increase of expenditures, because obviously construction costs we know of in the water construction industry have gone up thirty percent. But noted, and I think maybe that's some of those spitballing sessions. We could either do it in a budget session. Or we could have it in committee because we have fire committee working on a fire department budget that as it stands currently is. Three hundred and twenty one thousand dollars plus in the red. And that, that shines a, a, a hard light on the general fund of what does that look like moving forward? But that's not to say that that's singular in nature. If we've planned on growing. Those are some mechanisms. That we have to give consideration to.
And as to Laura's point, if I can just comment on that quickly, correct me if I'm wrong, but my, it's my belief that. Just because we do this tax thing over the next five years until those properties turn over to new ownership at that higher assessment level perhaps. It doesn't benefit us in terms of, because we're still working.
So you, you are right with the caveat of. You're partially right. It comes uncapped on sale and transfers. Um, but it also has a, an exponent known as, we have the rough aggregate of a decade of. Surveying sites. So. The findings therein, we can actually find revenue streams if there's been. Building permits or no building permits for expansion improvements to structures. That go through the field report and are noted as such. That will have a direct uptick in revenue without even being at point of sale.
Right, because it's the taxable value or the assessed value that.
So.
Yeah, but it's, I think it's all miniscule when you look at the larger picture.
Well, and I, and I wouldn't disagree. We don't, I wouldn't use the adjective of miniscule. I think what, I think coming up in the near future, it may behoove this board. Have that conversation with Alan Berg or forecast what some of those findings are looking like.
You're going to have a lot more. Tax, what do you call those things in March? Tax tribunals, you're going to have a lot more activity there.
Uh, and that's why we have to be cognizant of what that need is in the general fund, especially over the next couple of years. Because. We have some mass gross deficiencies.
It could be those situations also where the person. Gets a tax bill and goes, well, you got away with. Gets a tax bill and goes, well, you got away with it for four years. And now I gotta pay. So, you know, there's, there's the.
I've seen cases at the board of review, uh, that didn't opt to go to tax tribunal that had a three hundred and six percent taxable increase. Three hundred and six percent. For that exact reason.
Sure.
Twenty-one years between inspections.
Right.
And so we don't know. And that's why I say that miniscule may not be the best adjective. Um, but to his point, sorry.
Hit me three times.
My elbows are grown. Gotta tuck in these elbows. My apologies. Uh, good thing you didn't have any cups on the table. We'd have to do a cups.
Can I keep it?
So, um, but with that being said, um. I think we can continue to have further discussion about it. That's money in the bank. Um, so.
Can I do one follow-up to the other part, the, the CIP? Um, so originally there was an actual CIP committee.
Yeah.
Then I get moved, the planning commission was going to.
That's what I was cool.
Right?
That's where it starts strategically. So there is a committee. I've actually, with Munetrix's help. Have already started. It's been within the enterprise fund, uh, sitting down with Kath and updating that CIP. That's what's being implemented right now. Um. And really, uh, we can probably start working and breaking it out by, like I gave to Chief Hanson. Uh, the same CIP format that the water department used. So that they can take these materials needs and forecast it over, uh, a five plus one, which is a six, which is short-term. You can make them twenty and thirty years. Um. But really, we can look at it as departmental. What are our needs? What are that, those going to be? Then Munetrix can then take those because the hardest part really is setting the database for it. And that's been the roughest part is sitting down with Munetrix and saying, here's the next series of Excel spreadsheets. Start implementing it. Um, so I don't know if it's completely live yet. Um, but the water department is nearly complete in terms of updating that CIP. And so it is, it's been.
So you're, so it's not really in planning. It's you and half.
Trying, trying to, while in this regard through the enterprise.
Yeah.
But the planning commission will then take that, once a roadmap's created. And do the scoring metrics, like the exercise that we went through. And then their recommendations, they're the sounding board. And then it comes back to the board of trustees and we approve.
But the CIP for, for the water sewer is really a rate issue, not a, not a general fund issue, not a tax issue.
Like I said, it's an enterprise fund.
Right.
It is, it is.
That's gonna be reflected in rates and. Well, as we've raised rates, you know. Then it becomes problematic, if you will, for. Seeking, uh. Millage rate, but especially, you know, for the council administration.
It's, it's all. The ugly truth. I mean, our infrastructure, we know this, uh. Well before twenty sixteen, that our infrastructure as a whole. Has been looked at as a, a, an average consumer of, it's not a problem. We've never properly planned. Never put maintenance into the system. And really, we've come. And I just said this to, to Miss Win with F and B. Besides the implementation of our infrastructure. The second best thing that this township did was bring in professionals like F and B to help us manage it.
But on Laura's point, I mean, we need to then, okay, we're getting new roofs. All right. So we need to go out. Plan, how much do we need to set aside or plan for? So that in forty years. We have the money to pay for our new roof and it won't be this number anymore.
Which leads back to two, two, a two-pronged approach. CIPs give you the roadmap of what you need for economics. But they don't provide the economics. And so the economics are, do we as a board have that conversation? Because yes. I've said it, uh, I will never push a millage without a vote of the public. That's just in my heart of hearts. I know that there's been conversation of that potential. Um, it doesn't mean that's wrong either. We need to look at. What is the best approach moving forward? And that's gonna be one of the things that I, I give to the fire committee to discuss. Um. In regards to just that department, but that doesn't look at the big picture either. We need, we need professionalism to help define. Because I think we as a board, we, we're in, in agreement, uh, that some topics are more palatable than others. Um, but the reality is, that's why we're elected, we're to have these and make hard decisions. And I don't know at this point, you know.
No, it would be nice. Uh, and I said it from the very beginning, that if we could. Take, for example, the roof or a vehicle or anything that will wear out and. Buy it. With the expectation that every month, we will effectively pay ourselves a lease payment. So that five years from now, six years from now, whatever it happens to be, when we need that new piece of equipment or that, whatever it might be. That we will at least have, if not a significant down payment, the ability to pay for it. Problem with that. Is that we have a very restricted dollar amount. And, and it is very hard to budget for or put aside funds that would be used for future expenses. And, and in an ideal world, it'd be great. Uh, 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 many municipalities do it routinely. Buy a new fire truck, for example, and then every year they would. Or every month, they would put monies into a replacement kit.
Well, just because. Don't think we have the income for it. I mean, I think we've got a plan for it.
Well, we, in, in this, in this budget, I think we have a contingency fund.
Well, we, we, we've had a contingency.
Well, we'll eat it up almost immediately.
But we did eat it up.
But we already, we already did eat it up.
So we, we start with good intention.
Uh, but it. Is a paved road to hell. So sometimes, that's what they say about good intention. Um, so. So, uh.
That's all.
No, um, so by all means, uh, maybe we can have some conversation of looking at funding mechanisms on the higher end of it. We need to. But we can also increase in efficiencies and eliminate, but that's still gonna be a, a roof and a cap. So no matter what. I mean, every department sees it. We see it. I mean, as a municipality, we have a, a millage collection of one point one zero three. We've lost three thou, or six thousandths of a millage recruitment. Um, because for a first time, we actually had our, our CPI, uh, encapsulate. And which was, we're growing, but. Now you're gonna get dinged for it. Um, so we lost six one thousandths of a millage. So.
But, but presumably on a higher. Put higher rate.
One zero three.
But a higher tax base, though, Nathan, right? I mean.
We, we're increasing our tax base.
Right, because.
And we have commercial activity that, uh, is looking to put in seven point five million dollars in taxable value. Um, working on several other multimillion dollar. Economic developments, uh, that will do it. So there's ways that you can do it by natural growth, but natural growth, well, natural growth, uh. Doesn't exceed expenses at our current rate.
Well, exactly. The expenses go up with the natural growth.
It has, has that propensity to do so.
Yeah, and unfortunately, some of those larger investors are gonna want incentives to spend their money here.
Yeah. There's always strings.
Oh, sure.
So. Uh, any further discussion? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
With a motion and support by trustee Polly to adjourn. Uh, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at seven fifty-nine.